We appreciate everyone being here this afternoon. At this time, we are going to ask everyone to stand. Mr. Phillips is going to give us the invocation and the pledge to the US flag.
Thank you, Paul and Helen for this most beautiful day. Thank you for all the many blessings. Thank you for the people being here tonight. Thank you for just us all in one big whole, Lord. Be with all of our birth responders, all of our men and women overseas that take care of our country. So we can have free meetings like this. Lord be with the family, family, head of all and their families. Hold them real tight and be good to them. Lord be with them in this meeting tonight and may we all make all the best decisions we can make. And Lord just be with us, love us all, hold us all together. In His name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Once again, we appreciate everyone being here this afternoon. Is there any additions or deletions to this afternoon's meeting?
Yes, sir. We have two additions. The first one is Proclamation 2024 P-14 for the HOSA International Leadership Conference participants. This has been added as a last minute thing because we just did not have the information we needed on Friday, and they're here, so we're glad to have them here. And the second one is number two appointment, the Florida Association of Counties Trust Board. Our membership expires in June. We just learned of it today or yesterday that it expires, and so we need to reappoint somebody to that board.
Do the commissioners have any? I have one on the commission comment, an update on the meeting that Joel and I attend, no, I'm sorry, that Mr. Kraus and I attended last week to Swan River Water Management to discuss the Hill property. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Yeah. Motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor, signature was saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries. Mr. Tim Murphy, Commissioner Murphy, have two proclamations.
Okay. Three. Proclamation number 2024 P-12. Proclamation by the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, designating May 2024 as Public Safety Memorial Month in Columbia County, Florida. Whereas in 1962, Congress and the President of the United States designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of Columbia County Sheriff's Office, Lake City Police Department, Columbia County Fire Department, rescue, I'm sorry, Lake City Fire Department, Florida Highway Patrol, Florida Department of Law Enforcement, Department of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms and Explosives, Department of Environmental Protection, Florida Department of Corrections, Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, Department of Agriculture, Florida Forest Service, and other law enforcement agencies play an essential role in the safeguarding of the right, safety, and the freedoms of the citizens of their respective jurisdictions in Columbia County. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their public safety agencies. Members of our public safety agencies recognize our duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property by protecting them coming to their aid in a time of need. And whereas the men and women of the public safety agencies of Columbia County unceasingly provide a vital public service who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered dedicated service to their communities and doing so have established for themselves an admirable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights, security, and safety of all citizens. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, Columbia County, Florida, the month of May 2024 is Public Safety Memorial Month in Columbia County, Florida, encourage all citizens to support our public safety professionals and their families while remembering our heroes whose lives were lost while protecting Columbia County citizens. Adopted this 16th day, May 2024, Columbia County Board of Commission Chairman Ron Williams and Clerk of Court James Swisher.
Motion?
I'll make a motion we approve. Proclamation 2024.
Second by Mr. Hollingworth, all in favor, signature was saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
And Board, on the 21st, they're gonna have a memorial service over here at the Met. I've been asked to come over and do a proclamation over there. I believe it starts at 6 o'clock, and if you can, if you've never been, it's worthwhile evening to go over there and spend a few minutes. Okay. What we got here? What we got here? Okay, National Travel and Tourism Week. Proclamation number 2024 P-13, National Travel and Tourism Week 2024 proclamation. Whereas the travel industry is essential to the success of every industry and will continue to be a critical part of Lake City, Columbia County's economic, economy development and workforce. Whereas travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country with an economic output of 2.8 trillion, supporting 15 million American jobs. Whereas travel spending supports vibrant, safe communities in Florida, Columbia County, and across the United States by generating 89 billion in state and local revenue tax 2023 to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public safety, and more. Whereas travel enables success for all industries, including manufacturing, agriculture, defense, healthcare, and more, by driving sales growth, innovation, education, and operation that power our economy, our nation, and Lake City, Columbia County. Whereas Lake City, Columbia County tourism employs more than 2,800 people and tourists spend over 200 million in local businesses. Whereas American travel, America's travel industry cannot be globally competitive without maximizing growth in leisure business and international inbound travelers. Increasing travel to and within the United States drives our economy to a more prosperous future and connects America. Whereas small business account for more than 60% of leisure and hospitality employment. Whereas travel is an essential industry, and we must continue to communicate that growth. Travel leads to economic growth, benefits businesses, and facets of mutual understanding and connects the nation. Therefore, the Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Lake City, Columbia County, and urge the citizens of Columbia County to join me in recognizing the essential role this industry plays in Lake City, Columbia County. Signed by James Swisher, Clerk of Courts, and Ron Williams, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Motion? I move, Mr. Hollingworth.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Ford, second, Mr. Hollingworth.
Everett.
Everett. Was it Everett?
Everett. He's tricking you.
Yeah. All in favor, signature was saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries. Everett is peeing out, moving his lips.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
We only have one more.
Oh, we do have, I thought we had them.
One more proclamation.
Oh, okay. And Board, what we'll do is after we go through the next proclamation, I'd like to get Connie to come up and receive a plaque after they get done speaking. And Connie, if you would, give a little overview on the economic, I'm sorry, the tourist development week coming up, some of the plans that you may have. Let me get my cheat sheet out here. These girls are up there educating me on how to spell, let me pronounce these guys' names, so if I don't do it right, y'all don't. Proclamation number 2024 P-14, recognition of HOSA Health Occupational Students of America, Fort White High School. Whereas HOSA is a global student-led organization recognized by the United States of Education and Department of Health and Human Services, whose mission is to empower HOSA future health professionals to become leaders in the health community. And whereas 13 students attended the HOSA State Leadership Conference, and whereas of those 13 students, six students, Trace Taylor, Trey Tyer, Kenton Haas, Cameron Simbrough, close enough, Jada Placena, and Clara Robinson from Fort White High School, qualified to attend the HOSA International Leadership Conference to be held in Houston, Texas on June 25th, 29th, 2024. And whereas this is an incredible honor for these students to, as only a select few qualify at state level to advance to the International Leadership Conference. Now therefore, in consideration of the above, the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, wishes to recognize these students on their outstanding achievements, hard work, dedication to the field of healthcare, and proclaim our support for their representation of Columbia County at the International Leadership Conference unanimously. Well, better not read that, we voted on it yet. But it will be signed by Jay Swisher, Clerk of the Courts, and Ron Williams, County Commissioner, Chairman.
Motion.
Motion approved, called proclamation.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Ford, all in favor, signature was saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries. We have a little caveat for you guys.
Ms. Blanton, you and your partner, y'all start off with, I'd like y'all to just give a real quick overview, how you got here, where you're going, what your goal is, and then the young man, put your hand up, that's one of our own. I guess you'd say we inherited his mama, so I guess we're gonna inherit him. And, but anyway, the names I got wrong, y'all don't hold it against me, okay? But however y'all want to work it out, if you want the students to come up, give a little overview, whatever, it's balls in your hands, do it how you want to do it.
One of the moms.
While that's coming up, Chairman, I just want to say, you know, Fort White High School is not that old. My daughter was in the first graduating class of Fort White High School, my oldest daughter, and I'm so proud of Fort White. They have come so far in a short amount of time. I was at the awards or the banquet the other night, whatever, receiving their college money, and you know, we have some exceptional students in Fort White. And their FFA program is one of the best in the states. I mean, that school's come a long way, and I'm so proud of Fort White.
All right, ladies.
Good afternoon. My name is Kristen Higginbotham. Myself, along with Ashley Blanton, we operate as the HOSA advisor for Fort White High School. Like you already said, we took 13 students to the state competition in Orlando, and six qualified to go to the international level in Texas. So a little bit about us, we are nurses by profession. If anybody asks us, we would say, I am a nurse. But thankfully, Columbia County has afforded us the privilege and the opportunity to teach nursing to some awesome students at Fort White High School. Like you said, these are some wonderful students. Now, why would two teachers fundraise to take a week out of their summer break to take students to Texas for a week? Is this because we love the heat and humidity that Texas offers? Absolutely not. I am a Florida girl, true and true, I'm used to this heat and humidity, but this ain't Texas. So, just throwing that out there. This is an incredible opportunity, not just for our students, but for us as well, to see this firsthand. It is because Ms. Blanton and myself, we believe in HOSA. We believe in the opportunities that it provides our students involved. The post-pandemic healthcare world has left a provider deficit. If you look around and you know anything about healthcare, there's a provider deficit, and HOSA provides secondary and post-secondary students opportunities just to see a glimpse into healthcare careers. I have had a front row seat the last five years into Fort White High School's HOSA chapter to see just a small fraction of what this chapter has done to remedy that deficit within just our community by providing our local community with providers straight out of high school into CNA programs, into EKG tech positions, and then straight into the RN program at Florida Gateway College, our alma mater, which is incredible that we can send students into the place that certified us as well. So, following me, we're gonna have Jada Placencia. She is our local HOSA chapter president. Then we're gonna have Kenton Haas, he is the HOSA chapter parliamentarian. Lastly, we'll have Trace Taylor, he is the HOSA chapter treasurer. All of these five students with us tonight, these are part of the PAR Pro team that qualified to go to ILC. So not only did they graduate within our local HOSA chapter recently, or they will soon in a couple of weeks, but they're part of the team that's gonna represent us internationally. So that is a huge accomplishment for Fort White, and I'm incredibly proud to be traveling with them.
Indeed. Indeed. All right.
You want any one of them?
I want them to introduce themselves.
Good afternoon. My name is Jada Placencia, and this year I had the honor of being our HOSA chapter president. Our HOSA chapter consists of goal-oriented, dedicated, and creative students. Our HOSA members have worked hard this year fundraising to be able to compete at regional, state, and international levels. And as it's been previously stated a few times now, we were able to bring 13 of our students to the state conference in Orlando, Florida, and we are able to bring six of our students to the international level held in Houston, Texas. From Fort White HOSA, we would like to thank you for all of your support that you have given us, and thank you for the continuousness or continuation of your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many scholarships did you get the other night?
I believe three or four.
I know it's three or four.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenton Haas, and I'm part of Fort White's parliamentary procedure team for our HOSA program. My team and I have an amazing opportunity to go to Houston, Texas for internationals this year, for the second year in a row, really breaking history-making for our school. We were able to learn so much through just not only the convention, but through the experience from meeting people from other states, other countries. We thank you guys so much for y'all's, for y'all's support for on these trips like this and for just helping our community out in the hole. So, thank you.
Heard your name mentioned several times the other night also, the scholarships.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is James Robert Taylor III, also known as Trace, and I'm a proud high school senior, class 2024 at Fort White High School. I have been, I've been honored to serve as the student body vice president and HOSA PAR Pro chairman, as well as our HOSA chapter treasurer. The last time I stood before you, I was accompanied by one of my best friends, Trey Tyer, in recognition of our second national FFA Agribusiness Award. I guess you could say we were pretty competitive. This evening, we stand before you as members of Fort White HOSA Parliamentary Procedure Team. We have the amazing opportunity to compete for the second time this year on the international level in Texas. What do we have to do with the commission, you ask? Well, as the chairman of my team, I felt it as my personal responsibility to inform you of the importance of this group of young people. I also felt it my responsibility to make you aware of the investment into our futures that we need. You see, upon graduation, I plan to enter the study of pediatrics, eventually opening up my own clinic in this area for low-income and financially disadvantaged children. Winning the division of this competition will open up doorways for funding for my education as well as my teammates. I am not only going to ask the commission for additional funding, but I'm going to ask something that's absolutely unheard of these days. I want to know if there's an opportunity that any of you personally have for us to earn this money. You see, I'm not afraid of hard work. My parents both taught me from a young age the importance of earning what you have and a sense of pride that comes behind it. I have worked for the last three years at Casey's Produce and started today, my first day, at Magnolia Pediatrics. I know how to cook, mow grass, pressure wash, grill, put up fence, trim limbs, you name it. If my teammates do not know what tasks are required of us, I am more than willing to help teach them so we can achieve our goals. As you can see in the papers that we have handed out with our itemized budget, this trip is quite expensive. I can assure you that an investment in our team will be an investment in the future of Columbia County. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We got a surprise for you guys. Tim?
We finally got through all these numbers. I thought I was settling a $10,000 deal here for, getting them Blanton girls involved, boy. But anyway, ladies and gentlemen, these, the kids speak for themselves. And Rocky, you witnessed it the other night, and the Fort White thing going on down there, it's off the chain. We jumped out there and helped the other group.
Don't keep them waiting so long.
Yeah, I'm not gonna make a burn. This trip's costing 19,500 bucks. The screw board has stepped up, and they're financing a portion of it. They're short about 13 seats. And Board, I would have no problem making a motion that we fund these kids because I think they're gonna represent Columbia County in a way that we couldn't even imagine.
And I think of that, and we're all second. I'll, yeah. Rocky, forward. Well, Mr. Taylor, what I was gonna say is, you've already, y'all have already earned it. You don't have to work for us, I can promise you.
Come on, lobby, hustle.
Y'all just want to get something for free. Y'all can't do that to them, y'all.
I need some help over here. How many scholarships did us, we earned. I was gonna, I was gonna make a bet, tried to tell a story better than grandpa.
All we got, we got second, all in favor of the motion, signature was saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries. Now y'all don't have to do any more fundraising, you got your money. When y'all get done, when you get done and everything and done, we'd like y'all to come back.
Come up till we get a picture with you. Come on, guys.
But we'd love for you to come back after you get done.
Yeah, we want to know how the trip went. I'm sure his momma's gonna make.
Y'all get up there with them. Y'all work.
Connie, be making your way up there, please.
Let's get out of that corner.
Thank you, man. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Don't worry. Don't worry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't worry.
Thank you.
That one girl that trained them, she graduated with Zach. She graduated with Zach. I feel old.
I've got two daughters and a granddaughter that has graduated, twelve.
Nursing.
Keep that wide-angle lens on there for ten.
Yeah, don't turn sideways, I can't, they won't let me. Can't get you all in the picture.
I was told to.
I'll make a. Motion, yeah. Go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Well, we got somebody, let Connie, she gonna touch on.
I'm sorry. I really have a problem.
We didn't know you coming.
I'm sorry. So, Travel and Tourism Week is all next week. For us, we're keeping it very simple this year, with me just starting and everything, we're gonna keep it real simple. So, Thursday evening, from 4:00 to 6:00, will be an open house at our office, just some snacks, some meet and greet, very, very simple on that. And then Friday, we're actually gonna go out and talk with some of our partners and just say thank you for all that they do and some of that we have, and that is really how we're celebrating this year. So, but it is a very, it's a very special week for all of us in the travel and tourism industry. So, thank you guys very much for the proclamation to get. Thank you.
Okay, now, Ms. Hollingworth. Okay, now, Rocky, we can move. Approve the consent agenda. Got a motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Ford, all in favor, signature was saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries. I'll make a motion we adopt. Consent agenda. By Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Hollingworth, all in favor, signature was saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries. Mr. Fulman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the rare opportunity I have to tell you that we actually get to do something with less work. We previously discussed conveying our regulatory authority over private utilities to the Public Service Commission, and I was gonna prepare an ordinance for y'all to consider. Well, in reviewing the statute, Chapter 367, there's a provision in there that says all y'all have to do is pass a resolution. Now, I do want to caution you, once you pass a resolution and hand over the keys for regulation of private utilities, that lasts for 10 years, okay, under the statute. It's not something you can take back. However, in light of the rash of complaints we've had in the last few months, we actually have someone that's attempting to investigate an issue with a utility that can't find the records they need, who had some experience with PSC, it seems to make the most sense, and it's consistent with what the board had previously asked me to do. So, staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution and transfer regulatory authority to the PSC.
Motion. I'll make that motion, y'all know where this comes from. Okay. I'll make that motion. Okay, a motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor, signature was saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
Ten years, right, Joe?
Ten years. Thank you very much, guys. This is, these folks are getting taken advantage of, in my opinion. Joel, you want to hand that down?
Oh, yeah.
The one paper I gave you.
Oh, we can, yes, sir.
While you're up.
Yeah, I misunderstood what you handed. Did you hand me that back? I was handing it to Kevin so his people would have it. Gentlemen, the emergency meeting we had yesterday, we outlined a process for approving certain work. Commissioner Williams has gone out into his district, he's met with a, is this Michael Armstrong? And he's obtained the necessary signatures and release for the county to perform work at 720 Northwest Bond. Bond Street.
Bond.
Bond Street. And Commissioner, if you could explain to the board what needs to be done there, then y'all can vote on it.
Mr. Armstrong lived probably from here to the road out there, driveway, maybe the other side, and his trees is completely planted, about six, seven trees on his driveway. He can't get out, emergency vehicle can't get in, and this is why we had the meeting and after we came up with a resolution, I went out and got his signature, all the paperwork done on it.
Chairman, I also have one that I turned in yesterday also, so can we include both of them in that vote?
If you want to present it, yes, the next item. Just let this one get voted on, because it'll be voted on individually, but yeah, do present it now, so we can get the work done. But go ahead, Commissioner, I finish yours.
So, I need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to accept the, what are we gonna call it, the hold harmless agreement.
720 Bond Street.
Seven, for 720 North West Bond Road.
Motion by Mr. Murphy, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor, signature was saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
While we're on that subject, I turned in one also, I emailed it to Mr. Kirby yesterday for Miss Boozer. She has a big pine tree across her driveway also that basically we just need to chop it and cut it to the side, and I'd like to make a motion for us to allow Kevin to do that one.
Got a motion by Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor, signature was saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
While we're on that subject, I turned in one also, I emailed it to Mr. Kirby yesterday for Miss Boozer. She has a big pine tree across her driveway also that basically we just need to chop it and cut it to the side, and I'd like to make a motion for us to allow Kevin to do that one.
Got a motion by Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor, signature was saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
Mr. Chair, while we're on the subject, I know all of you had different projects you were looking at. If several of them get collected and we don't want to wait until the next board meeting, you can call a special meeting fairly short notice. So, I just want to reassure you guys, I know y'all are all dealing with your constituents, and we can be accommodated.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kirby.
And before I get started, I would actually encourage that while we're doing this, so we're not bouncing all over the county if y'all get in, as we come in. All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ellisville, I think we will all agree that's our next frontier. We've put a lot of time and money and energy, and we will continue doing so. What we're about to do tonight is really a historical moment that we've been striving for, for several, several months. It was a big puzzle to put together. Many of you that travel that neck of the woods will agree we've got a big congestion problem. problem. But guess what? That problem's going to increase, and that's a positive thing for Ellisville. So how do we get around it? The first step is infrastructure. We all know the department, meaning DOT, they're working, working very strong with us on three separate major projects down there. One of the quickest and easiest ways to accommodate those needs for many different things, inclusive of your congestion today, is what we're gonna talk about this evening. Farnell acquisition. This is a farm, right down the bottom of your screen, basically across from Mini Warehouse South on Seventy-five, drives you up to Hurlong Road. I've shown you that drawing, drawing in the past. It took us a hot minute to get there. So what did we do? Went and got an appraisal. It come in at one point six two million, roughly ten acres of land. We always knew that not only did we need to do that, we need to relocate existing Farnell grade to the west. What does that do for us? That relieves that congestion. What does this service road do for us? It relieves that congestion. The homeowners or property owners also desired that road be moved. So we went, sat down with them, said your appraisal coming at one point six two. They said, well, that's nice, let's talk about the grade. Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, we know we need to relocate it. Let's talk about some gates on the existing grade, once you abandon it. Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, we know we need to do that. Let's talk about the light, illumination pollution. We know we need to do that, plant some trees. So as the process went on, of course, they, they're smart people. They took a look, what do we think our property's worth? They come back with roughly a two point seven, uh, two point seven five million dollar ask. We kicked that around from partners, uh, private partnership with BZB, uh, corporation, they were involved, this does show them the benefit along with everybody else. So at the end of the day, the negotiations turned out to be okay. If the county does two million, we have a grant, we have the money in coffers. BZB folks says we'll take care of all the finances north of two million. So tonight, basically, you can get that picture, we have the funding in place. Uh-oh. What happened?
Give him a shotgun, he can handle that.
That's exactly right. Thank you. So, county attorney has advised us a four-way agreement will be necessary, and the agreement will include the county, FDOT, landlord, and the developer. We do require a supermajority vote for this, gentlemen. So basically, I'm sitting here tonight saying if y'all want that to happen, we have the money, we have the resources, we'll cough up two million, BZB's gonna go north of everything of two million, we'll start off by relocating the grades, we can do that right out the gate. FDOT wants us to partner with them on what we call the grandiose plan, not only the service road. Ultimately, it's a forty million dollar improvement, but they conceded that. We move the grades, simultaneous, we're requiring more funding, we'll design our quadrant road immediately, we'll permit that to separate contract, but the design will be inclusive of all those improvements on forty-one. That's what it's gonna take to grow Ellisville, alleviate your congestion, so forth and so on. You're off to the races for your next frontier. We got one shot at this.
Yeah.
If you don't do that quadrant road, you're gonna be years out, waiting on that huge improvement. Mr. Chairman, I do request a motion to do just that.
Got a motion by Mr. Murphy, second by Mr. Hollenworth, any comments or discussion?
Yeah, yeah, comment, 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 comment. Go back to that picture you had there.
What picture?
The world's biggest. Is, did, when, when you, when you included this in here, I, I know there was some discussion about taking this dirt road out of the middle of his property and putting the road straight in on the other side of the property, is that, is that kinda included in with this? If, if you kind of determine that this man, we're gonna spend all the kind of money here, is he gonna let this happen without another bunch of money to do that job?
Yes, sir, that is in addition to the two million.
Okay.
What I was referring to is abandoning the current dirt grade, relocating the new grade. That is in addition to the land acquisition. Yes, sir. That is part of the agreement that I'm asking you to vote on. Yes, sir.
But we're not gonna have to buy any more land from him to do that.
No, sir.
All right, I agree with that.
He is actually gaining a little profit.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is the agreement totally correct. We need to do that, okay.
Commissioner Phillips, to reassure you, the reason we're doing a four-way agreement, normally you would just go out and acquire this property and you'd hold it, right? If this was a standard deal, it's not a standard deal. Everybody, all four parties are gonna sign, nobody's gonna hand money around until everybody's committed to all of it. One of the things we're requiring the Farnells to commit to is this property swap. Our engineer has advised us that realigning Farnell, taking that curve out and realigning it with the other side of the road is actually much safer. And so, we feel comfortable, I'm right there with you. We're not gonna do anything that's not in that four-way agreement, including DOT and including developers. To illustrate for you, if the developer at the last minute said, well, I'm not gonna do the, the, the money over two million, well, then nobody's gonna do anything. And, and I think that's what I want the board to understand, even though you're approving this price, it's contingent on everybody agreeing to everybody.
In addition, the funds that the county needs for any of this work is all grant-funded.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, let me make it real simple. It's two million on our side, the rest is about B and B. But the money does come out to coffers, none to exchange hand with other parties. It's our money to realign, abandon, it's just like doing a contract on a road.
I understand, that, that's no problem, I just wanna make sure it was all in one big ball.
Yes, sir.
Well, for, for, for fifteen years ago, I started talking about Ellisville, that it was gonna be the next hot US ninety in Columbia County, and what this board have done tonight is making what I predicted come true. And that board, just a big step for this, this board to take. Uh, we got great partners, and we're working together, and I commend this board for stepping up doing it. All in favor, sixty percent, aye. Opposed, lights out, that motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next item, revised job description, evening maintenance worker number one. So this board approved two positions here a while back. Life is changing. We don't, everybody knock off at five o'clock anymore, we do all these tournaments and whatnot. This is a housekeeping issue for landscaping parks, we don't want any pushback in the labor world, we tell everybody, folks, you gotta work from four to eight tonight, this is just a housekeeping issue. I'm requesting a motion for approve the revision of the job description for an evening maintenance worker one, including all actions necessary.
So moved. Got a motion by Mr. Hollenworth, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor, sixty percent, aye. Opposed, lights out, that motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Final item I have is bid number twenty twenty-four oh one, Massie Street paving. As you are aware, all of you utilize our annual resurfacing account to pay various roads non-applicable FDOT funding in your district. I'm doing paving in, uh, Commissioner Williams' district. Geographically, he pointed out a road that is a complete disrepair, disrepair, reached out to our contractor, Mr. Boone, doing that job. I said, Mr. Boone, while you're there, will you extend your unit prices to catch this dilapidated road without any extra moab, et cetera? Which is common sense, he agreed to. It's coming out of your annual resurfacing account. I'm requesting a motion to approve the addition of northeast, northeast Massie, bid number twenty twenty-four oh one, and to be funded from account three oh three eighty-eight-two five forty-one thirty-four-six.
Motion. Fulman. Motion by Mr. Hollenworth.
Second.
About Mr. Phillips?
Second, me.
Oh, man, Mr. Ford.
I know I don't look like it.
He don't move, he don't move his lips when he's saying something.
I know, I know.
All in favor, sixty percent, aye. Opposed, lights out, that motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm here looking at you.
I know, I know.
I know you can't hear. Oh, well, we'll get through.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll be relatively quick. I'd like to address the additional item first, which is the fact, Florida Association of Counties Trust. We just were notified that, uh, the term expires in June. This is our last meeting before June. Uh, right now, you have Commissioner Murphy on the board. Uh, they need you to make an appointment to the board beginning in June to fill that next term. Our recommendation is to reappoint Commissioner Murphy.
So moved.
Got a motion, Mr. Ford?
Second.
Mr. Phillips? You move on this. All in favor, sixty percent, aye. Opposed, lights out, that motion carries.
All right, first item I have on my list is bid number twenty twenty-four E and twenty twenty-four F. This is your housing rehab loan programs from both ARPA and CDBG. Um, we went out to bid, our consultant, uh, Guardian CRM provided detailed bid tabulations in your packets. Basically, there were four contractors that were bidding on these. Uh, the lowest bidder on nine of the homes was Patriot Response Group, and the lowest bidder on one of the homes, remaining home, was Certified Roofing and Construction. So we're asking you award the nine housing repair projects to Patriot Response Group LLC, and one housing repair project to Certified Roofing Construction.
So moved.
Mr. Ford?
Second.
Second, Mr. Phillips?
I've got a couple questions, though. Uh, who, our Guardian Group, that's Guardian CRM's gonna be the one overseeing these?
Yes.
Okay. Where are these companies from?
Um, I'll be honest, I don't know. I think, um, I don't know, I can look, I can get to that.
The only reason I say, I mean, are we gonna be able to do a little bit, and I don't even know all the details of some of the ladies that come up here complaining about some of the workmanship and what have you, and I think I've even heard some staff and other people, or, did they come and recommend, I get, you know what I'm trying to say here?
Right.
I mean, I, I don't wanna, everybody looks at it as free money, it ain't, but, you know, uh, I just wanna see that they get quality. It, it just blows my mind that, you know, you hear these companies come way off that can put a roof on for the same, you know, cheaper than somebody local can, you know, it's like...
So they tried to prequalify all the contracts, and we did have one contractor in there that was doing substandard work. We no longer work with that contract.
Okay. Now, that's all I ask, is just let's try to keep it, 'cause I, you know, you gotta feel for these people that, you know, they feel like they're getting a break, and then again, they go through misery for shit they done.
Here's the problem, Mr. Murphy, you know, the one that was in every district, she was doing all of this and that. It, it clearly spelled out on the contract what to be done.
Gotcha.
And they done that, but she wanted this done, that done, and it wasn't, it was a home repair, not a home replacement.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah.
And again, when the board...
Basically, we're trying to make the home safe, livable.
Habitable.
Habitable, yeah. Right, and some people thought it was a complete remodel, I understand.
So when the board approved it, it was literally for emergency home repair.
Right.
And they get it confused because the community development block grant houses is a different standard.
Gotcha.
So it just depends on which fund they got funded out.
All, all in favor of the motion, sixty percent, aye. Opposed, lights out, that motion carries.
The next item is RFP twenty twenty-four D, degree monitoring services. Basically, uh, we came back in, this was the low bidder, synergy disaster recovery. It is a contract that is not to exceed a million dollars. Basically, this is your emergency response, the people that do the monitoring. It's required by FEMA and the state if we wanna get reimbursed, and so we're asking you to approve the contract.
Motion.
So moved.
Mr. Ford, second, Mr. Murphy, all in favor, sixty percent, aye. Opposed, lights out, that motion carries.
And again, if we have no disasters, we don't have to pay them anything. So it's only if we have a disaster. Resolution number twenty twenty-four, R twelve, Old Richardson High School. As you remember, we have a five hundred thousand dollar grant to renovate the classroom sections, uh, I guess they call it the new section or something like that, back behind the Richardson Gym. Uh, we went through that, we believe the half a million dollars that we have will cover basic structural issues that make it so that you can actually get in the building. It does not complete the renovations. So we're asking you to allow us to apply for an additional five hundred thousand dollars to complete the renovations. Once we complete this first grant, this will be the second grant. This does have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar match, which can be, half of it can be in kind. I don't know of anything that we could do that would be in kind. So I would be recommending budgeting, if we get to grant a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars as a capital project in next year's budget, to go along with this half a million.
Motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Hollenworth, all in favor, sixty percent, aye. Opposed, lights out, that motion carries.
And then finally, my last item is the building inspector position. You guys, uh, directed us to add an additional building inspector and to begin to go out and recruit it, but it was at a work session. You can't take action at a work session, so we bringing it back to you to officially say an addition, uh, building inspector, and that includes all the actions necessary in which to go out and fill it.
All right, motion?
Move that we, you're talking about the building inspector. Building inspector, approving, authorize an additional building inspector position, make that a motion.
We got a motion by Mr. Hollenworth, second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor, sixty percent, aye. Opposed, lights out, that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. All right, we are at this point in the agenda, we have a three-minute open comment.
You gonna bring up anything else about that?
Yes, sir, I'm gonna get to me. Yeah.
Comments?
After comment?
Yeah.
I didn't understand. Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Good afternoon, my name is Bonnie Coffey Canone. I am founder of Abolish Abortion Florida and no to four dot org. I am a resident of Columbia County District One, and I'm here representing myself and the hundred and fifty-six Columbia County babies that were murdered in twenty twenty-three, along with the twenty-eight Columbia County babies that have been murdered so far this year in twenty twenty-four. The picture of the baby in front of you is fifteen-week baby, an abortion at fifteen weeks has to dismember, disembowel, and decapitate the baby. They can't get the head out still, so the head has to be crushed, the skull has to be crushed, and the brains come out, and then they pull the head out of the mother. That is a fifteen-week abortion. If Amendment Number Four on this November's ballot passes, then abortion will be legal and, um, and you cannot interfere with abortion in any way, shape, or form prior to viability, which is at least twenty-four weeks. So if Amendment Number Four is passed, there will be a bloodbath, the likes of which the state has never seen before. Now, Columbia County had no problem becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary. I am asking you to adopt a resolution to become a Fourteenth Amendment sanctuary, honor the life of every human being from the moment of conception, and, uh, adopt a resolution officially condemning Amendment One, to get the word out to Columbia County residents that you oppose Amendment One and to request people to vote no on it. I'm available for questions? I'm available for...
No questions from the board? There's no questions?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Bonnie Coffey Canone. I'm available for photo ops, too.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Like the high school. I'm just gonna let my thirty-nine seconds play out here, because I'd like you to look at the picture of this baby.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're very welcome. Still got twenty-seven seconds to go, so I'm gonna let my twenty-four seconds play out here, and I'd like you to look at this baby, this fifteen-week-old baby. Every baby is made in the era of...
Ma'am, your time is up, ma'am. Your time is up.
My time is, I've got eleven seconds. Ten seconds, eight seconds.
No question, ma'am.
Seven. Well, I'm still talking, but I'll be done here in a minute. Thank you.
Would there be anyone else for public comments? Not hearing any, uh, staff comments?
No, sir.
No, sir.
No, sir.
Uh, we have a, uh, commissioners, the comments have two things, uh, and this is, we got an official, uh, letter, a text from the president of Animatics. Uh, we have emails from Clint that, 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 that shows that the gentleman that spoke about the soccer nets is completely wrong. Uh, Clint was asked by the board of, of Animatics to remove those nets. Those nets at the old ball club do not belong to Animatics. Those, uh, nets were destroyed, am I right, Clint? So none of that holds water, period. We got, as I said, we got the official, uh, request from, uh, the president of the board of Animatics asking for soccer goals. There's about twenty, twenty-five kids practice soccer, play, learn to play soccer. And, uh, talking with David, they set up, uh, uh, goals, uh, were cost about five thousand dollars. So for the kids, I wanna put the goals out there. This is not forced by anyone, it's a letter from the president of, of Animatics Board. And I would like for the county.
You need a motion?
I need a motion.
Well, I make, I make a motion.
I got a motion from Mr. Everett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hollenworth. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signal the same eye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, that motion carries. Last week, uh, David and I went over to Swan River Water Management to talk to them about the Hill's property. Uh, my thoughts was, we do away with trying to put a dam up and keep the dam up to, to do away with that, uh, presented to them that idea that we make a recharge area uh, out of, out of that property, turn it into a swamp and make a recharge area. Uh, they thought that was a good idea. The little mound will be about four foot on that, on that side. Uh, what was important about the idea, uh, we can take the water that's from the college and part of that from the north Florida industrial site, uh, to bring it and put it in, into Alligator Lake. We will get, uh, uh, credit for doing so because Alligator Lake, you know, uh, goes into Eastut. That give us ability to have a, a increase flows of cups for not only Ellisville, but for the industrial side itself. You know, with Swan River Water Management, the more water you take out, you gotta put water back in. This will give us a good mechanism to put water back into the aquifer. Along with the, the, uh, Columbia City Lime Rock Mine, uh, would put us in good shape of doing so. They will not give us credit for Falling Creek, what we call the suck. Uh, uh, although it take trillions of gallons of water, uh, goes into the Falling Creek sinkhole, but we won't, we won't get credit for it for being a recharge area. But we can, by designing, uh, using a portion of that Hill property to increase that area, which they are going to, uh, uh, tell us what we need to do. Kevin needs some information about how big the recharge area got to be and, uh, what it would cost to excavate that dirt out of it. Now, if we don't do something, they gonna sell Mr. Jeffrey property. Isn't that what they told us?
Yes.
So, uh, it's a way to help with recharge, and it's a way that we can help Mr. Jeffrey, uh, save a portion of his property.
Ron, did they also agree to, to give us some money to help with that project?
There are some money that are already available. I asked, uh, the Swan River Water Management Director, would they board consider splitting the cost of it with us? And they was open-minded to ask the board to do so. Kevin?
Well, Commissioner Williams, they brought me into the phone. What I've requested is basically a map of what's there today and a map of the exact end game, what's the expectation? Because we want a document. We don't want any gray area.
Yes.
Okay, here's what's here today, and here's what's needed to be at the end of the day. I won't be able to take the opportunity to dissect that and put true numbers. What does that cost? We, 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 we wanna do this right. So what I've requested, the next step is, Swan River, show me a picture, drawings, what's there today? Exactly what are y'all talking about? Once we memorialize that document, I can go in and put a cost estimate, all that. Then we need an agreement of whatever perpetual maintenance is, if any. Because I think that's what's the most important to everybody. What does it cost to get there? What's it, what does it cost to take care of it?
Stay there, stay there, yeah.
Kevin, another thing that's important to me is, can we get Mr. Hill some of his property back?
Yes.
To answer your question, yes. I would not use one hundred percent of the property.
Okay. Okay, then also, while you're doing that, Kevin, you know, it's coming out of one district into another district. You know, so I, I guess my biggest question, question would be the recharge, you know? Is it going in there, you know, flooding, flooding situations like, you know, I already got the issues on Paiute. I already got the issues on the backside of Woodhaven. There's nowhere for the water to go. You know, it's eighteen inches of difference in between the outfall of the lake and two forty-two. So water's going to a bowl for absorption. It's not going nowhere to relieve there in a creek.
So what the Water Management District is proposing is, by expanding the lake, you're creating more area to retain additional water.
Right. On the hill.
And that, right, and you would release that as Alligator Lake could take it, and then it could go into the sinkhole. The whole point is to get it in the sinkhole, not to flood. So it's kind of a retention, kind of a flood abatement project. With an intent of doing recharge.
When we own that property on the, on the south, on the west side of, of Old Prince Club Road, you know, we got, we own some property there.
Yes, sir.
Right where that big drain come up on the road at. Well, what, what is proposal to do if this is, is the recharge area to come down this edge right here with a, with a, a canal and let it go under the road and flow into Alligator Lake?
Well, once again, Mr. Chairman, that's reasonable question to see a picture. Show me what we got there now, show me what, I think all of our answers will be answered out there, Mr. Murphy, to your question. I mean, not only we want, in my opinion, you got three things to establish. Let's memorialize what the end game is. Let's make sure it don't have any detrimental effects, and let's establish a cost for that. Because regardless of what agency you're dealing with, a very clear understanding in the beginning is a clear understanding at the end. What we don't wanna get into, and I'm very familiar with your area, is all of a sudden we do this, it affects that, right? And I think that's the purpose when I met with Commissioner Williams and David. That was my only ask. I wanna see pictures, I wanna see pictures, I don't, I don't wanna have an ID out there.
So what we're wanting to do is get all this data together and add it to the work session on June twentieth. So we could present it to you in an entire package on the twentieth.
So we would be creating a basin to hold water. And once that basin got to a certain level, it would overflow just like a redigibod basin.
Right, it's overflow, it's a puddle.
Yeah.
Okay, but you're saying June the twentieth, this, this June twentieth?
Yes. So on June the twentieth, we were planning to have a
You're trying to rush the horse here. I'm not going for that yet, so we've got to
What you gonna do?
Coming back with a plane by June the twentieth? What's the rush?
Well, we're gonna have a work session on June the twentieth. If it's not ready, we won't put it on that work session. But we're gonna talk about, uh, MSTUs and some other things that some of the board members has asked for on the twentieth as a budget work session.
Okay, so what is Swan River doing for us before now on June twentieth?
Uh, preparing the maps, giving us the elevations that we would be required, what's the footprint, so that Kevin can look at it and figure out what it would take to actually implement.
And the other issue, Commissioner, is the interlocal that's been signed will need to be amended. So we talked this morning, Mr. Kirby and Mr. Kraus and I, I need to reach out to them. You're, you're not wrong.
I can't wait to watch it.
But, but I think what
I, I, I permit docs that take seven bucks. I can't wait to see this year.
I think, uh, I think what Mr. Kraus is saying is, whatever we can find out by the twentieth, we'll try to give you as much information.
I, I'm, I'm for the recharge, I'm for it a hundred percent. And I'm for doing whatever we can do to help the Hill family, but I got, I, I, I'm waiting.
Well, they, they, they are willing to help, I guess, to the point that we hadn't seen the kind of help that they'll give us. Don't you get that feeling, uh, Mr. Kraus?
Yeah, and they were actually planning to attend the twentieth, so they could actually be
Who, who, who y'all talk to?
Uh, Hugh Thomas.
Y'all just talk to board members.
You did not talk to board members?
I, I have.
Okay, we have not. We talked to Hugh Thomas.
You're spending, you're writing checks, you can't cash. Yeah, like, but we'll see.
On a sidebar note, please need my picture way before June twentieth. With Ford.
It's gonna be exciting, man. I, I think I heard right, Mr. Murphy saying he's never seen Swan River Water Management move that thing.
Yeah.
I'm a wrong one.
I agree with that. For some They might know, they might know they're ready to get this
No, it's
Here's the bottom line. If we don't accept it, they got people already lined up to buy Mr. Hill property, and by God, it ain't fair.
I, I'm all for it, don't get me wrong, I'm all for it, I just, I'm like, Mr. Murphy, I, maybe they've been working on this a while, so, yeah.
Well, no, this is the first time they heard about turning it into a swamp.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And just to be clear, they haven't imposed a June twentieth deadline on us. That, that's something we did to ourselves. So they're, they're, they're not gonna pull out if we don't approve it on the twentieth.
We just wanted them to be able to present to the board on the twentieth.
Mr. Everett.
So what we're, you're saying is the county is gonna get credit for that swamp, like we can use it somewhere else.
Yeah.
So if we don't have to buy land somewhere else to create
No, uh, no, we'll get the credit to add, to pump more water out of the ground because we're putting more water back into the ground.
It's a return.
It's gonna help us with our cup.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm, I'm just, I'm not, I wanna see all the particulars before, before I even think about it. I mean, I wanna know what it's costing, what we gonna do, and what we gonna get out of it.
All right, Kevin, describe it kind of like a mitigation bank. What we know, in Ellisville, Fort White's cup is pretty much maximized. They have very little water left that they can pull out of the ground for growth and development. Ellisville's cup, by the time you get the Busy Bee and everything else on there, is gonna be maximized. So if you want to grow in Ellisville, which I think most people do, we've gotta find a way to put water back into the ground.
Back in the ground. That's all where you gonna grow Ellisville.
That's right.
But once you, once you use your cup up, you cannot get an increase unless you got a mechanism in place to put water back in the ground. And this would give us that opportunity. Because Ellisville is sitting into the Eastut Patriots.
And Commissioner Williams asked them directly, can we use this in Ellisville, and they said yes.
I need to go buy a piece of property and dig a big hole in it. And then, and then sell it to the county where they can hold water. Well, let's talk, that's exactly how it works.
Yeah.
You gotta put water back in the office somewhere.
You know, any commissioners got any comments? Anything to bring before the board?
Yeah, I, I got one thing, I got one thing, Rocky mentioned something earlier about the septic tank deal. Uh, I would like that staff, uh, we need to set up a meeting with the DEP, I'd love for Troy and this, uh, our new, uh, girl over at Health Department, I can't remember her name, I'm sorry. Uh, this, this situation that we running into with septic tanks and Rocky, you, you, you know more about it than I, but it just seems as though that to me, if I'm understanding this correctly, that we possibly are going to have somebody come over from Swan County once or twice a week to permit septic tanks. And I'm pretty sure that Swan, I mean, Columbia County is building, uh, building out a lot of fashion. Yeah, what, what's happening, I'm, I'm concerned. I mean, my son's building a place in Swan County right now, and it just took him three months to get a permit. And I understand that they're very low-staffed and this, that, and the other, but, I mean, you know, you heard Troy touch on it earlier during budget. And, uh, you know, not, not Rocky, you know, but these septic tank companies, this could be detrimental. And, and, uh, I, I'm, I'm just concerned, uh, that they don't even consider to keep us in the loop, if you wanna say. I mean, I heard about it in the hallway, you know, it, it's a, it, it's a big deal.
So we actually have two issues. One is that they are putting these septic tank approvals under, like you said, Swan County or whatever counties they're putting it under. The second is, within a year, state laws requiring it to go to DEP. So by twenty twenty-five, DEP takes over the septic tank permits.
But in between now and twenty-five, I'm, I'm concerned, you know, you know what I'm saying? And then even with that being, and that's a great point, David, because even with DEP situation coming on, we need to be planning now. Because just like Troy said, you know, interest rates are six and a half, seven, and we, we're only minus seven, two pervert compared to last year. I mean, you know, the people that are coming and building in Columbia County, North Florida, they're writing checks, they're not financing.
Mr. Murphy, that's what I was trying to tell you a while ago. You know, most of the time, in, in, in other counties we work in, the building department's not the holder.
Right.
I mean, Lottway County right now, if you get a permit in two months, you're doing good.
Yes.
You know, it's, it's Some of them take four or five months, yeah.
I just don't want to get us I don't want to play in the Lottway County.
It's something I'm, I'm gonna speed the process up.
That's right.
And they're mandating counties do this stuff, and here you have a state program that's holding the whole hill up against this.
And yes, I can set up a meeting. Absolutely.
Okay, anything, Mr. Murphy?
No, sir, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Ford, uh, Mr., uh, yeah, okay. All right, motion for adjournment. All right, we adjourn. Ma'am?